Okay, roll call. Roxanne Precor is excused. Linda Geary. Linda, Lisa Mance. John Conyer.
Here.
Oh, John, good to hear you.
Thank you.
Scott McCarthy.
Here.
Dan Proctor is excused. Vinnie Lanzetta. Christopher Brand. Mike Calamano.
Here.
Drew Bogus.
Here.
Tom Wilken.
Here.
Michael Baden.
Here.
Jared Brown. Mr. Vardy.
Lovaty.
Love.
Here.
Thank you. I apologize for the mispronunciation. Vivian Welton.
At least I'm not the one doing it.
Vivian Welton.
Here.
Thank you, Vivian. Mark Watkins. Frank Omquist.
I'm here.
Thank you, Frank. Victor Markowitz, I know you're here, Victor.
Yeah, I'm here, right.
Matt Rudikoff.
Here.
All right. Joanna Weiner.
Here.
Bill Murray.
Here.
Vince McLaughlin.
Here with Candy.
Thank you, Vince. We don't get to share it tonight. Tom Bonavita Goldman. Gio.
I'm here.
Okay, that's everyone I have. Is there anybody I didn't call? Is there anybody else on the line?
Cindy's coming in right now.
Okay. Cindy Lanzetta.
Hi.
Hi, Cindy. You're recorded for attendance purposes.
Hi, I had a hard time getting on. I don't know why.
Somebody have a second report.
It's that feedback.
Joe, with that, Mike, can we, we're gonna move to the approval of the minutes. Okay. Can I get a motion?
Almost.
Watch that. Please, set some ground rules. Please identify yourself when you move something or vote.
Vince McLaughlin moves.
Thank you, Vince. Do I have a second? Mike Baden's second. Beat you. Mike Baden beat you. So I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Everybody voted yes. Thank you.
Except for Dennis. We're gonna get Dennis back.
Oopsie.
Where are you, Dennis? Unmute. Okay, sorry, Dennis.
Why don't you, any training opportunities that people want to discuss besides what's online? Somebody raised their hand? Anybody wanna raise their hand?
No. Now, my hand is raised because there was some bad feedback, that very screechy feedback.
Yeah, we got rid of it, I think.
Okay.
Tempero, I think if anybody's listening to this from two sources, you gotta turn off one. So if you're listening on the phone, but you also going on the computer at the same time, you gotta turn off at least one of those sources.
I don't think I was.
Any other, any discussion on training opportunities? Hearing none?
Uh, Tom has some.
Tom.
You got me muted?
No, you're on. You're on.
Uh, Orange County canceled their training session that was supposed to be later this month, their full day one, and I, they're still holding out for the ones in June, I think, that are at night. So they might cancel later on. But they did send out notice a week or two ago that they canceled their Saturday full day one.
Okay. Any community reports? Raise your hand if you have one.
Uh, Mike, you're not on mute.
Yeah, actually, just looking at the screen, Rob, I see a video image of Dennis and a phone image of Dennis, so it might be his that's causing the feedback.
No, I'm off the phone. Trust me.
Okay, it's still showing up on our screen, so.
Yeah, I know.
It's not him.
It's not me.
Oh, did I just mute Dennis? Ha. Hang on. Sorry, Dennis, you've been muted.
So no community reports. We're gonna move on to planning board reports. Any committee reports? Any chairperson reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to planning department reports.
I got, I got one here.
Okay, hold on.
No, I was just gonna say none. Move on.
Thanks, Mike. And on the planning department reports, just, I have, just from a financial perspective, we don't have any issues right now, except to say that the county is in a spending freeze right now for any non-essential spending. So that will carry over probably into budget time, which we should start probably in June or July. And it's gonna be a very, very difficult budget year. The estimates from the National, the Association of Counties right now with respect to loss of revenues, they're doing it on a countywide basis, is anywhere between $5 to $15 million for Ulster County, just on the loss of revenues from sales tax purposes. So it's gonna be an extremely difficult budget year. Just be aware of that. I have nothing to add on the community, on the environmental notice bulletins. As far as communications, I know that, Mike, you've been joining the county executives' calls at 1 o'clock for the supervisors. They also do town halls. If anybody's interested, we can send you those links. Send us an email, send Mary Ann an email. We can send you the link so you can join. You can also watch the county executive's Facebook page, and there's notices on that. The other thing I wanna say, so, all right. The other thing I wanna say is today is census day. If you haven't filled out your census form, please do so. The current response rate in Ulster County is about 30, 29.1%. At the state level, it's a little over 30, about 31%. We are lagging the region with respect to responses from the census, the first responses from the census, and it's primarily in the mountain communities and and in Rochester, down through Worsing areas, and Olive, that have low response rates, and that's probably due to second homes. It could also be due to that some of those areas were slated to receive drop-off packets. And some of the indications are, is that those drop-off packets were delayed by the Census Bureau. You should know that the Census Bureau has extended the census deadline. It was at the end of July. It's now the middle of August in terms of the census deadline, and they've delayed and/or extended a lot of their outreach efforts to date. So you're gonna see more outreach efforts later than you, than you, they were originally planned, and they don't have schedules out for those yet. If anyone has questions about that, we can send you, and I will send you, the latest census, the latest census schedule that's out there. Any questions?
Uh, Vinnie has his hand raised. Vinnie?
Yeah, Dennis, on that subject, the state legislature was voting on the aid to localities budget today, and there was a holdup, and it got sent back to committee because they were gonna cut more money from it. So who, what entails, what that's gonna entail for Ulster County, who knows, but all I know is they plan on cutting more money from that part of the state budget because of the shortfall.
Yep. We, we have not heard anything relative to the amount of money that the state had allocated to Ulster County. None of the counties have responded. The state has gone completely silent with respect to the money they were supposed to provide us with respect to outreach. So we're doing very limited outreach. We have some digital outreach going on. We have some flyers, et cetera, but we also have a spending freeze as well. So it's gonna be what it is right now. We have an ongoing conversation with the with the executive's communications team with respect to what we're, what we're gonna do, but there was originally a 200 and some odd, 270,000 and change made, going to be made available. And we have draft contracts with all our nonprofits to provide outreach. They're asking us questions. There's a lot of questions right now as to what that funding will be. Thanks, Vinnie. I have no other communications. We did, we have not extended the deadline relative to our farmland additions to ag districts. It was the 30th of March. We did have some people essentially reach out to us and contact us and said that they were unable to get in because they couldn't get their applications into the county building because it was closed. So we've taken emails that indicate that they're gonna apply and snail mail after that as a good faith effort to submit applications in a timely manner. Any questions? No special topics discussions for me? I'm not gonna call for public comment.
Matt has a, has a question.
Matt?
Yes, I'm not sure if this is an appropriate time to raise this issue, but with regard to the Ashoken Rail Trail, people that I know who've been there are very concerned with the almost nonexistent extent of people's social distancing on those trails. In the parking lots where there's overflow of cars parking, and on the trails themselves, they say it's just really, really crowded, and people are acting, you know, sort of like there's no issue going on at all. And I'm just wondering if the county, as the manager or owner of that trail, or the county health department, or anyone is sort of looking at that and thinking of that as sort of a public issue or a public concern.
We, we have, Chris has been out on the trail. We've also posted signs on the trail that indicates that social distancing is required. If it continues to be a problem, the county health department will make the necessary call. So if they, people don't social distance, they may lose access to the trail. We did close the bathroom facilities at the trail. We didn't actually, DEP consulted with us, and we consulted with them. So the bathroom facilities are closed relative to the trail, but if overcrowding and/or social distancing cannot be maintained, then we'll end up probably having to close the trail. And that call's gonna be made by the county health department. DEP has indicated they're gonna let the county health department make that call.
Right, Matt, Matt wanna say something else?
Just, just thank you. Thank you, Dennis, and thank you for looking into it. I think it's a real issue and a real concern. Have the town supervisors at all been involved at the local level, trying to put out some advisories, or trying to put it on their websites, or anything like that?
It's on, it's on the Ashoken Rail Trail page. We do have a couple of volunteer stewards. We had a contract with New Jersey Trail Association. I gotta think it's New York, New York State Trails Association. Don't quote me on this. I, Chris will have it, have the exact people who we contracted with to run a volunteer program out there. And because of the virus issues, they have pulled their volunteer corps, so they didn't risk exposing them in their, in their everyday work. We still have some very hardy and dedicated volunteers from the Woodstock Land Conservancy and elsewhere that are still working on the trail, but we've told them not to interact within the parking lots because it's almost impossible to keep social distancing in there, and we don't want anybody to get into trouble without a lot of support. And it's not our responsibility for the parking areas, so they're just trying to maintain order on the trails themselves.
All right. We had a couple of comments here. I'll take them the order they received. So thank, Vinnie, you're, you're not muted right now.
Yeah, I just wanna make everyone aware, formally during the town board or the town sorries tonight, the supervisor's gonna declare a state of emergency for the town sorries formally. There's a resolution on their agenda for tonight to do such that, and to extend emergency operations as a result because of the flu pandemic. And the parks and various buildings within the town are gonna be, remain closed for the foreseeable future. So state emergency in town sorries effective immediately.
Uh, Mike, you had something to say?
Yeah, just to follow up with what Matt was asking about, I can tell you that it has been in the the daily conference call with the, with the supervisors and the deputy county executive. It's, it's been a forefront topic that's been discussed. Also, what's been discussed quite considerably is short-term rentals, and they are being viewed currently as accommodations, which are listed as essential services, so they remain open and available. There are a number supervisors, Supervisor McKenna from Woodstock, Supervisor Stanley from Shandaken, myself, Supervisor Houck from Worsing has concerns about camps. The county health department did put out a directive that no camp permits for seasonal camps will be given at this time. The question is still in sort of discussion about how things like travel trailer camps and camps that are year-round operation, how they are dealt with. And that's still being, continued to be looked at because many of those are also viewed as accommodations. So it's a very touchy subject, a very difficult subject to deal with, but it definitely is being discussed, so just letting people know that.
Uh, Mr. Murray had something to say, too. You're on, Bill.
Yeah, thanks. Just that, on that point, Mohawk Reserve closed their facilities, or their woods, to public last week, I believe, and though there are considering perhaps opening up again on a limited basis. Minnewaska's been doing a very limited amount of people can enter into their park. They have a way of controlling how many cars come in. I think they're even limiting the amount of time that guests are staying on their trails and getting them out. And certainly back to what Mike said about home sharing, I'm very interested in that because I'd like to see some of the home sharing cut back if not stopped in the county.
All right. So I think, hearing, hearing no other comments, like moving on to referrals.
All right.
So Robert, you're up. I'd ask everybody, this is what, from a, from a, a procedure perspective, we're gonna let Rob go through as much as he can on his, on his, on his referrals. If anybody has any questions, I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand. When it comes to votes, we're just gonna get a motion in a second, and then we're gonna ask for anybody that has an objection, rather than going through the eyes, because I can't see hands, or, so we're gonna ask for no votes and abstentions. Is that right, Mike? Yes.
Mike's currently muted.
Okay. So Robert, why don't you start?
All right. So town of Marlboro. Actually, no, if you have, rather than, if you're gonna recuse, just raise your hand if you're recused from town Marlboro. If you can.
Cindy, you're gonna recuse yourself? I'm listening. Cindy is recused.
Okay. Anyway, so this is a four-lot subdivision. Typically, we have a referral exception agreement with the town for anything a little fewer than five lots, but in this case, it has one lot in the town Marlboro, one lot currently in Orange County, and then they're subdivided to two lots, become four. So what you're gonna have are two new, two existing structures, two new structures. And the lots are just gonna be continued, so they will be, continue to be split between the, between the two counties. And also, the other issue is that it's on Millhouse Road, which is right down the road from historic Gomez Mill House site. So, let's see. So things we've received are referral form, plan board application package. We got some technical feedback from MH and E. Lots, and so all the new septic reviews within the town, is within Ulster County. I was submitted to SHPO for comment. We just received a letter back from them that requested a archaeological phase 1A, 1B. So that will be part of our comments as well. There's a road cut for, there's a memo from their building department here. There's a lot 1 and 2 in Marlboro, 3 and 4 mostly in Newburgh, 3 and 4, three to lots, as you'll see from the aerial when I get to it, have some access from a combined road. I'm gonna see if I can share the aerial. Don't wanna do it that way then. Okay, let me. You share. Okay, so you should all be able to see it, so. Let's see. I'll annotate if I can. So right here is the county boundary. Is that a good color for everybody?
Yeah, we can see it.
Right, so I'm gonna just hand this back this way. So back this way, this is the, actually, over here, this is the historic building right over here. So this is our lots. 1, 2, 3, the fourth lot is over here. This is the other new building lot. So it's far west and far east are new building lots. This is the existing gravel road, which serves about three of the different lots. Let me go back to sharing, share, back to the PowerPoint. So this is the subdivision map as I described. So you have this is lot 1, this is actually lot 4. This is existing house on lot 3. Existing house on lot 2, and then actually, I think my meeting menu is covering all the photos are clock, are, so this is lot 4 over in here. Comments will be, health department review, Ulster County, let me go to that. I'm going to get rid of all my annotations here. There you go. SHPO for that phase 1, phase, the archaeological work, and then just to look at that shared drive, shared driveway between lots 3 and 4. As you can see, the curb cuts here and here are pretty close together. They may wanna do a shared driveway in that location. Oh, I see Linda's here now. So I'm gonna unmute everybody.
So if I can have a motion? Please identify yourself.
Vivian.
Thank you, Vivian. Do I have a second? Mike Baden's second? All right, I have a motion in a second. Any opposed? Any, any additional discussion? I apologize.
Rob, I just have a quick question. With the, with the lots spanning.
Mike, I wanna do something here. I'm just, uh, one person has that all that feedback, so I don't know how to, that is. All right, just go ahead, Mike.
So with the lots spanning across the county and town line into another town, how does that work in terms of setbacks and things like that?
Uh, well, it's relative to Marlboro and Orange County, depending on which portion of the lot it's in. But the lots themselves, they'll be parcels regardless of their jurisdiction, regardless of the jurisdiction, they'll still be whole parcels.
Okay, I'm assuming this is gonna get referred to the town of Newburgh?
It already has. I actually already have referral, and I have referral response back from, from Orange County. There's actually another concern that they raised that there might be close to a bald eagle nest with respect to this. I'll make that advisory comment.
And I'm assuming that we're suggesting a shared driveway because the town allows that?
I don't know if they allow it or not. I just.
Well, I don't know if you wanna make an advisory unless we know they allow it.
Right, well, it's an advisory.
All right.
It wasn't required.
All right.
Rob, I have a question.
Hello?
Yeah, Rob?
Yeah.
I have a question on that. Does Orange County, with Plattekill, Orange County, any section in them on a shared lot as being a subdivided lot, standalone subdivided lot? Is there gonna be a note on these maps saying that these have to be connected somehow, so they can't be just seen as a subdivided lot already at the town line?
I know they, I think they took care of it at the local level, and with.
Because that's always an issue that I've seen with town of Newburgh, and we, with them, they wouldn't come, things that they did, they said, well, they didn't have to come to Plattekill because it was a lot in, in the town, in their lot, and so they could do whatever they wanted, and they didn't act as a coordinated recoup. So that's my past experience with town.
All the development, the new houses, the new septic, they're all actually in Ulster County. So all we're talking about is lot line changes within Newburgh itself.
Yeah, but the, I, we've just had cases where they said, well, there's, that's already a subdivided lot there. Each one would be two lots. Well, three of them would be two lots. The fourth one's all in, in town Marlboro. All right, that's it.
Hey, Rob, you got Dennis muted.
I have Dennis muted. All right. I don't know, I might as well. Okay, Dennis, you should be unmuted now. Sorry about that.
Everybody hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay, I, I think we can make, we can just make an advisory comment. There's a note on the plat, the lot extends into Newburgh, but I can't, we can't make the Newburgh do whatever they want to, do something they don't wanna do.
That's true. That's true, but it's just something that we've always come up to guess.
So I have a motion. I have a second. I had discussion. Any, any opposed to the county, to the recommendations with the additions as noted? Hearing none, it's so carried. Rob, wanna move to the second one?
Sure. Okay, moving on. Okay, so it should just be Dennis and I who have vocal audio now. Okay, Village of New Paltz, this is Cooper Street. It's for a site plan for a single-family home, net zero home. There's no county impact associated with a single-family home. It's located behind, just off of 32, behind apartment complex, behind the memorial pool area, all that, so no county impact on a single-family home.
All right, thanks, Rob. You wanna unmute everybody?
Oh, yes, I do.
So I'm gonna list, I'm gonna list Mr. Murray as being recused. Is that correct, Mr. Murray?
Hang on.
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody have any comments? Hearing none, no county impact. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
You gotta identify us. So folks, who moved it?
Mike Calamano.
Thank you, Mr. Calamano. Do I have a second?
Gio, second.
Has the food. Has the food.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any opposed? Hearing none, so carried. Robert, next one?
Sorry. There. Town of Ulster. I'm gonna assume Frank, you're recused.
Yeah, I got him listed.
So this is Route 9W. It's north of, it's between that area, between Storgardies and the town, town Ulster, on the east side of Route 9W. I'll just bring up the aerial real quick. So this is the site right here. Former contractor's yard. Supply yard.
And Rob, from my perspective, the area that we're talking about, never mind.
What? Oh, sorry, you're drawing. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Keep going. Don't worry about it.
Okay, well, you can draw on here.
Yep. No, you're good. Keep going. Just keep going. Yep, no, you're good, keep going, just keep going.
So, let me go to the site plan, so access off Route 9W, need permit from NYSDOT. Um. I'm about landscaping, kind of landscaping proposed, tends to lose its, um, leaves towards the bottom of it, so the, uh. Alan Swornson, who's the planning consultant for the town, recommended different types of spruces that don't lose that screening at the lower level, so wanted to. Echo that comment. Uh, lighting levels, we don't have lighting level details, there are full cutoff and LED, but we don't have the lighting levels for it. This is more of a zoom in, so you have the proposed down. Uh, one thing we don't have is a utility plant, so as you see, these are propane tanks, let me bring up the annotation again. So you got propane tanks here. And then you have a generator here, but we're not sure where the gas might come into the site. Or if they're making propane on site and filling it from that.
So that's what we think is happening, we think what they're doing here, since there's a propane generators, they're taking gas off the street, natural gas off the street. And making propane and then, and then putting it into those tanks. We think that's what's happening here. So we want to see a utility plan relative to that.
Right. So NYSDOT, lighting levels, the mix of landscaping, utility plan, also I don't have any signage details. And you're all unmuted.
Would the DEP have to take a look at this?
No, it's not in a watershed.
No, because of the fact that you're dealing with natural gas.
No.
I have a question, um, since there is a potential for explosion, uh, and it is pretty close to Route 9W. Are there any proposals to put a earthen berm or some physical barrier to protect against flying debris? In case of an explosion?
We haven't seen that the, we haven't seen that, what we could do is, we could ask them to extend the Jersey barriers around the front. In this location, hold on a second.
Yeah, I got, there's Jersey barriers over here, but there are none.
Yeah, why there are none in the front? That's weird.
I mean, they're quite a ways off, just, just so you know, they're, they've gotta be a good hundred fifty, two hundred feet off the, off the road.
What, what size tanks are these, Dennis?
Thirty, thirty thousand gallons.
How many of them are there?
Three.
Three.
Three. What are they, what are they, fifteen or twenty, uh, feet apart?
Yes. At least twenty. Uh, no, make it fifteen.
Dude, that's a little tight, you know?
Yeah, we've seen them tighter, I mean.
I'd stand.
Dennis, they're closer, if you look at the roadway, it's twenty-six feet wide, and that's, that's down probably about twelve feet in between those tanks.
I'm not arguing with you.
Is it above ground or below ground tanks?
They're above ground.
Above ground. So we'll make the comment to put the Jersey barriers in front of the, in front of the, the last tank that faces the road.
Yeah, along the, along the front would be smart.
Yeah, I get it.
Central Hudson wouldn't have to look at this, would they?
Nah, yes, because it's probably a connection to their gas line.
Dennis, Mike, Mike Baden, or Rob?
Sure.
Did this, did this go to the local fire district? Um, and also I have a concern, I, if you go back to the site plan for a moment.
Sure.
I see electric sliding gate, eighteen foot. In the event of a, if there was a disaster or, or an issue and there was a power outage, i- is there a bypass for that gate?
Okay, so those are two comments we can make.
Make a comment to the fire district.
Comment to the fire district, comment to make sure, those gates typically, um.
I believe they typically have a manual override.
Yeah, they're like, they're just like garage openers, you just disconnect the motor. So we'll add the fire district, um, and add the Jersey barrier comment, anybody, anybody have anything else? And utility?
Does the town, uh, fire inspector look at this?
We had that comment, we had, we're gonna add that.
Okay.
Was that Cindy?
Yeah.
Okay. No other comments? Do I have a motion?
Vince moves.
Thank you, Vince, do I have a second?
Scott McBaden, second.
Scott, second.
We got Scott as a second. We have a motion, a second, any other additional discussion? Hearing none, any opposed?
Rob, you got a hand up?
Do I?
Henry Brown?
Well, he's not muted, you can speak, Chair. I don't know. Should be able to.
Yeah, I didn't hear him answer on the roll call either, he might be having a problem with his, with his microphone.
Hmm. Chair, if you can hear us, you might want to use your phone to call in. I don't know. Okay, so, is that it?
I don't, not yet, I wanted to see if Jer could get through.
Uh, I think he just dropped off the call.
Okay. So hearing no additional comments, all in favor? I did all oppose, I apologize. Okay, I'll drive myself crazy. Hearing none, it's so carried, thank you so much, folks. Robert, Pest Master.
Yes.
And I missed, I'm listing Mr. Onquist as, as recused.
Yes, alright.
Alright, Phil.
One second, mute everybody again, and then I'm gonna let Dennis unmute. Okay, moving on. Alright, we're still in the town of Ulster, Frank, we're gonna assume you're recused on this one again. This is, uh, off Barbarossa Lane, so this is near the traffic circle, near Sawkill Road. It's a new site, six thousand square foot, single story, where office space and warehouse. Park meets the parking standards, has full cutoff LED lighting, it isn't a hundred year flood plains, but their base elevation out here is a hundred and fifty-five feet, they're at a hundred and fifty-seven. We are going to ask that they provide a elevation certificate, which I have, don't have in my materials given to me just yet. Here, I'm gonna bring up the aerial real quick. Come on. That's New Paltz. Keeps wanting to, uh, look, there we are, so. Here's our site right in here, this is Washington Avenue, Sawkill Avenue. Over there. This is our site, I'll zoom in a little bit. Access will be from over here on Barbarossa Lane to the site. And actually, you know what, I'll bring up the, uh, I'll bring up the flood plain real quick, just so you can see it. And it's all.
In, in the five hundred year flood, right?
It's in the five hundred year flood plain, actually, huh, that's interesting.
Yeah, I don't think we need an elevation certificate for the five hundred year flood.
Yeah.
So let's, let's squash that comment.
Okay. Alright, going back to the other slide. Alright. So let's see, you got our project review notes, got floor plans, we're waiting on signage details, so I'll be comment. We have elevation, we have a lane cut sheet for LG, full cutoff. This is the proposed building, so access off this Barbarossa Road. Uh, existing parking, I mean, new parking. Same comment on the landscaping plan, they're applying spruces, again, that kind of loser leaves at the lower half, want to maintain that screening all the time as they grow. Other comments, this is what it's gonna look like. Nothing too special. So health department approval, there is septic, there is no septic, there is existing water out here. Landscaping avoids spaces that lower, lose their lower branches, lighting levels need to be established, still don't have signage details. And we'll scratch that elevation certificate comment. I'm gonna, well, hang on, I'm gonna unmute everybody. Alright.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion? Discussion. Do I? Can I have a motion, please?
Mike Baden makes a motion.
So I have Mr. Baden as a move, and I have, as Vivian is a second. Discussion.
I have a question about, this is Linda, Gary, um, is there, um, request for erosion sediment control, uh, SWIP? Cause it's over an acre. Uh, it looks like clearing, they're gonna be clearing the, um. The vegetation of the lot, it's not a pre-cleared.
It is a lot, lots of, basically a field, but I take, I take the idea that there should be erosion and sediment control if we don't have that.
I think it's less than acre.
It said, oh.
It's one point nine.
That's the disturbed acre.
That's not the disturbed.
Oh, that's the size of a lot.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't have the disturbance, I didn't.
Okay.
We'll check that, if it is, if it is over an acre of disturbance, we'll add that comment, Linda, is that okay?
That sounds good.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Onquist, we have you listed as excused.
Of recused.
No, I'm excuse, recused, thank you, Robert.
Recused, not accused.
Yeah. We may have you listed as excused, but I don't know.
As long as it's not executed.
I think you need some more candy, Dennis. I think so. Thanks, Vince. Robert, want to move on to the next one?
Sure, hang on. Alright, moving on. Caremount, there's a medical sign at the existing Caremount, uh, where the Smoothie Place, Smoothie King is, new hotel is going in, and Caremount's going in, of course, from Adams. It's for a second complying monument style sign, there's, I'll show it to you, but there's no county impact associated with it. So the new sign, oops, alright, what the heck just happened there? There's a new sign, hey, so it's comes, it conforms to the height requirements and to the size requirements.
Landscape, mountain, you know?
Exactly, landscape, so I'll just unmute everybody.
I'll make that motion.
Gio.
I tried raising my hand because I had to recuse myself.
Okay.
There was Vince?
Yeah.
I was Vince, no.
It's hard to see the participants screen when I'm in.
Okay, so let me see if I got this, I have a motion by Gio, a second by Vivian.
Yeah.
Excused, Mr. Onquist and Mr. McLaughlin, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, any additional discussion? Hearing none, any opposed? Okay.
Alright, moving on. Alright, last but not least, this is, uh, well, worsening Dunkin' Donuts, we reviewed the site plan for this for a few months ago. And now it's a seven foot area variance, they're doing a drive-through for the existing Dunkin' Donuts. And what they decided to do originally, they were going to demolish an existing home, what they've decided to do now, since there is an elderly gentleman living in that building, they decided to. Let that building remain and give it a seven foot variance. Now, I'll just. We don't think this has, oh, okay, I don't have the, uh, site plan on me, that's weird. Okay. So I don't have the site plan on that for me, but that was gonna be no county impact on that seven foot side yard variance.
Motion? I'll make that. Gio.
Second, Mark Woods.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, um, Mike Baden?
Go ahead, Mike.
Rob, Rob, what is the required setback for it? So when you say the, the seven foot variance, it's a seven foot variance, or, or the setback will be seven feet, I'm just clarifying.
The setback will be seven feet.
So do we know what the, what the variance that they're asking for is?
Probably between ten, fifteen, Mike, I would guess.
It's probably, it's between fifteen and twenty-five, somewhere in that range, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but they're do, the reason they're doing it is to let the person stay. In that existing home, otherwise they're going, otherwise they're gonna tear it down as part of the site plan. Then what they are gonna be doing is they're going to be removing the porch, there was a covered porch that was on the building, and they're gonna be removing that covered porch as part of that.
Let the old, let the old guy stay.
Exactly.
thoughtful of you.
How do they have a right to take down the house? I mean.
They own it.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's.
And I did probably, they probably had some community pressure to, uh, essentially make sure that they didn't throw the guy out of the house.
Good.
And, and being a good corporate citizen, Duncan Donut said we'll let him stay. Yeah.
And they're putting a lot of trees between it as well, so there'll be plenty of landscaping between that.
I have a motion and a dissected, any additional discussion? Hearing none, any opposed? So carried.
Alright. Well, that's it for referrals.
Alright, I'll open it up to the, why don't you open it up for any comments before we adjourn?
Oh, that's, that.
Yeah, comment, uh, Onquist.
Go ahead, Frank.
Uh, when you have the participant list on my screen anyhow, there's a place where I can raise my hand, however, when you, the, when the, uh. Program shows the faces, that raised hand does not exist.
I get it.
So there may be. If we do this again, it may be an issue.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, in other words, when the, when the site, when the, uh.
Oh, yes.
When referral is up, you can't see the pictures, you can't raise your hand, I get it.
The participants, I, I see all the raised hands.
There's, there's, there is a way to do that, if you set your screen at side by side.
Yeah.
And then you put the participant window up at the top corner of your screen, which is what I did, I was watching, the participant window stayed there the entire time for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you have to go to side by side, not full screen.
We'll try that, thanks, Mike.
Yep, it seemed to fix it for me.
Anything, any other business for the board?
Yeah, I want to just compliment the, the planning department staff for putting this all together here, I know it wasn't easy, we're trying times right now. But it, I would be remiss if I didn't say anything, uh, I appreciate, you know, everyone.
Absolutely.
I think that, that, that compliment goes solely to Robert, and, and I also would add.
Robert.
Hey, three cheers.
Yes.
Thank you, Robert.
Me too.
So are you planning? Are you going to copy the participant list and use as the record?
We have it recorded now.
Yeah, it's recall, right now, let me explain, if you, if you didn't come on earlier, it is being recorded to the cloud right now. And I'll be able to upload this video to YouTube, and when I do that to YouTube, it'll create a transcript as I, um. Hit the, um, closed caption button, it creates a transcript, then we can edit the transcript to be, uh, because it's, it's not perfect, I mean, it's trying to hear what we say, so it'll create a transcript.
That was, that was what I was gonna say to you, Rob, I know, uh. According to the governor's executive order, any video meeting like this during this time, there must be a transcript made.
Right.
However, there's no timeframe of it, so what my attorney is suggesting is that we do the minutes as usual, and that we transcript, transcribe it, excuse me, at a later time, so.
Right.
Hey, Mike, on that subject, there is a county policy, uh, I think it's seventy-two hours. And with the governors, the governor's executive order supersedes any county policy, Vince, so.
Just so you know, the YouTube feature of automatically creating the closed caption, which creates a trans, at least a rough transcript, is very easy to do, it shouldn't be too.
Okay, thank you.
Dave's already done for the Ulster County Transportation Council.
I may, I may pick your brain on that offline for my town board meeting.
I'd like to get in on that meeting for my planning board meeting also.
Okay. Okay. Um, so I'd like to thank the chairman for, uh, giving up his post and letting me sort of hog the meeting to a certain extent, thanks, Mike. Uh, I think, I think we got this down now, I, I think the next time, if we have to do this the next time, hopefully we won't. But if we have to do this the next time, I think it's, it's more than, uh, flexible enough that, Mike, you can chair the meeting, I didn't know how flexible this was gonna be, but this worked out very well.
It, it did, and with the governor saying we're not gonna hit a peak till the end of April. We better look at using this again.
Yeah, I think for May, yeah.
I'll make sure everybody has candy too.
Delivery.
Yes.
And Robert, I just wanted to make sure that you knew I was here the whole time.
Yeah, we got you, Jeff.
Yep, we see you.
Okay.
And you got me, Rob, right? I mean, I wasn't here the whole time.
Let's, Mr., is that Miss, Miss Gary? Yeah. Yep, we got you down.
Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, anything else for, for the board?
I'd just like to say thank you, I'd just like to say thank you, and it worked out well. Hopefully in the future that this will continue to work out well, and I'm able to see the board and hear Dan's.
And you, sorry, Clark, you should probably be muted.
Right, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other, any other discussions?
Mike, I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mike Baden. Okay.
On your second.
Thank you.
Finally.
Thank you all for participating, I appreciate it.
Well, everybody, thank you all.
Good night.